It is three o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
I can't hear you, against for me.
She's got her mic on. I better turn mine off.
Hey Bobby.
Yes.
Do you think she's having issues that we can fix or?
No. Shremae, get out of the meeting and rejoin. I think your, your mic is probably not defaulting to the mic that we have on there.
Okay. I'll go ahead and ask our city solicitor, solicitor, would you mind just reading during the roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Waldrich.
Present.
Commissioner Sauer.
Here.
Commissioner Tippett.
Here.
Commissioner Wisman.
Present.
Mayor May.
Here, we do have a quorum present and welcome our members and welcome our mayor-elect, Lane Workson, Commissioner-elect Lisa Hunger, who's here, and hoping I don't miss somebody. I can't, I don't know who caller one is. That's okay now. Anyway, so this is a special meeting. And we will proceed with, I don't know, do we have any citizen comments? No, no citizen comments, okay. So, should be a pretty quick meeting. Second, we have a second reading. And I would ask the solicitor to read the second reading of the ordinance amending section thirty-seven point thirty-one E.
An ordinance amending section thirty-seven point three-one E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan, classification, and compensation. This ordinance amends section thirty-seven point three-one E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan, classification, and compensation to create the position of historic preservation officer, to amend the pay grade for the following positions, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director and Purchasing Agent Deputy Director, and to remove the term annual from the description of the golf pro contract.
Moved by Commissioner Wisman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer, is there any discussion? All right. Being none, clerk please call roll.
Can you hear me now?
Please.
Commissioner Waldrich. No.
No.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes. Signs are adopted. Uh, next item is current and future BLG grant funding.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I have a few things for us. I've been in quite a lot of discussion with a number of folks, our CLG coordinator at the state and our consultant at Palmer Engineering about our current CLG grant funds and, and future applications. And it's my understanding that our staff are still hoping, of course, to have the window workshop later this, this next year. In light of, of what's going on with COVID, I suspect that that, that might not be able to be, to happen. And we had a six thousand, six hundred plus dollar award that I understand if it's not used by August first, I believe it is, will not only be ineligible for the future, but the Kentucky Heritage Council would actually have to pay that money back to the federal government. And it would be a bit of a stain on our grant application, you know, for, for future uses. So, um, in consideration of some of the work that we're doing currently, I thought it would be a much better, and, and this was suggested to me, that a much better use for that fund directly, we had asked staff to look at surveying Green Hill and the cemetery in that area. And in some consultation, that also seems to be probably a project that's going to be a bit longer than what can be completed before next August for the money especially. So, um, instead, I'd like to suggest that we look at the Cove Springs Water Works, the overflow tower, the old dam that's across there, and work on a nomination to the National Register of that waterworks. You know, it's credited as being possibly the second oldest waterworks in America. I know Liberty Hall Museum here in, in town just discovered a few years ago that they had running water in like eighteen oh six in that building. You know, it's really something incredible and part of the reason that, that Frankfurt grew to be state capital and a number of things that, that it is. So, our staff has been working on a, a project to repair and, and make some considerations for future maintenance of the waterwork systems anyway. And I've been working with Sean to give him some, some contacts for engineers and things to, to look at that project. But I thought this would really be a, an ideal thing to do in tandem with, you know, that, that project to go ahead and list that to the National Register, to document that history, find out what that history is exactly for our community to, to celebrate. So, I'd like to make a motion that we formally transfer, and I believe as long as the certified local government program will approve it, and I think they will, to transfer the funds that were set aside for the initial window workshop to a National Register nomination of the Cove Springs Water Works system. And.
Made that in the form of motion, okay. Motion by Commissioner Wisman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. Now, is there any further, any discussion or question?
Um, I, I have a question for, for either the city manager or Mr. Commissioner Wisman or somebody who's knowledgeable about this. Uh, we have some sort of maintenance agreement. We don't own Green Hill, right? But we have some sort of maintenance agreement with, with the folks that do. Somebody get me up to speed on that if you can. And if you don't know it now, please let me know as soon as you can.
I think I could. My, my belief, and I, we probably need to ask Ms. Ross to, to verify everything, is that the city does actually own Green Hill Cemetery. But we made an agreement with the Board of Directors many years ago to maintain and operate the cemetery independently of the city. And the city just contributes money every year for the maintenance and, and additional funds occasionally when it's, when it needs repairs. So, my understanding is that we do essentially own the cemetery, but I've not been able to verify that positively, but that is what I'm told.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, thank you Commissioner Wisman for that suggestion.
Two, essentially three follow-ups, Mayor, under the same topic here. I just wanted to get that one out of the way because it was the easiest. I wanted to announce too that our staff has been working on a transition of another one of our CLG grants that we had previously to provide a, a program called CAMP, which is a, I forget the acronym, but it's for certified preservational, certified local governments, staff and boards and otherwise. And I understand that we have essentially the agreement back that we're going to be hosting that on December eleventh and eighteenth from one to four o'clock. I know we can't mandate that our boards and commissions attend those trainings, but it does qualify for the continuing education requirement required by House Bill fifty-five for our members of our planning commission and architecture review board and otherwise. So I just thought I'd use this opportunity to, to highly encourage the members of our, our planning commission, obviously all of our architecture review board members, commission-elect, current commission, and I'd like to see even members possibly of our parks board and our museum board attend this training, which will be a, I, as I understand, maybe Mr. Coughley or Mr. Rebecca can help fill out the information just a little bit more in a second. But will be an introduction to historic preservation generally, introduction to legal issues and concerns, why we have preservation standards and overlay districts and, and zoning, information about public outreach, a lot of things that are going to be tied hand in hand with our, our preservation officer that's coming up that we just approved, as well as uh, you know, future initiatives that are going on in our community and things that we've been discussing most of the last two years. So, I hope that everyone can attend that. I believe we can have up to thirty people and I think our staff are going to put out some more information about that possibly tomorrow, I understand, or, or first of the next week. So, I don't know if Mr. Coughley's with us or Rebecca, if we could have them. I think I've covered most of it, but they have any additions?
I am here.
I think they are, Mayor. The, the only stipulation, like you said, Commissioner, was I think we were limited to thirty people. Rebecca and I had a conversation about it this morning. So, that said, we'll, we'll work on a larger venue to accommodate all those per COVID restrictions and then go from there. I see Eric has joined and he might have some further information.
That's, it's not in person, Mr. Russell, it's, it's only digital.
Personally, yes, but we're still limited to thirty people. And we talked about even moving it outdoors someplace if we needed to, to do, to be able to do something outdoors, even at Cove.
Okay. Mr. Coughley, do you have anything to add?
If you don't, that's okay.
No, not, not a great deal. We will, you know, we're doing this on a quick turnaround, so of course, as soon as we, we're getting it nailed down now, we'll start pushing information out to folks. And certainly notifying, you know, our architectural review board, planning commission members of the training opportunity and hopefully they'll, they'll take us up on it.
Thank you.
I'm quite excited about this. This is the first time our community's offered this level of professional training and I think it's going to be really, really beneficial for, for everyone who attends our staff and, and board members and and commission and commission-elect members and, and otherwise. It'll give a, a great primer into some of the requirements that we are obligated to, you know, to comply with federally and state and otherwise.
Okay, Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, I didn't know of Sean Pickens was with us today.
Uh, I think he is here.
Yeah.
He may want to.
There we go.
He may want to speak to that issue.
Which, which one, Commissioner?
Eric, you might review the, the involvement of the Capital City Museum Board.
And the, and the parks board members, maybe perhaps a few of them would like to attend as well as Mr. Pickens and, and maybe some of the other park staff. I think it's apropos because there will be some level of information that would affect our, our historical resources in our parks as well.
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm sure several members of the museum board, as well as the parks board and myself would be, be glad to attend. I'll get that information out to them. Just need the, just need the specifics on it and I'll get it out to them ahead of time and try to have several folks available.
All right, great.
And Mayor, I've got just a, a follow-up here about future CLG grant funds.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, like I mentioned a minute ago, you know, we had directed the exploration of, of Green Hill Cemetery specifically and, and the community that was around that. From, from every indication that I can find, it, it appears that Green Hill, the area around the cemetery was essentially a free town after the Civil War and, and is part of the basis why Frankfurt is, you know, is a, after the Civil War was a safe haven for African Americans and became a hub of, of African American culture. It's part of the reason that Kentucky State University exists here, and I think we've done a very poor job in past of really uncovering what that history is, and it's, it's really rich in, in our community. In fact, one of the only interpretations is the barracks in South Frankfurt, sort of knowing that those were intended to be officer quarters and then used for safe havens for African Americans to, to live in in Frankfurt. So, we had sort of directed that Green Hill Cemetery be looked at, but in further discussion with some professionals in, in the field, I feel like we need to broaden the spectrum of that. So with the upcoming grant application period for CLG funds, which I believe is due in March fifth, I thought we might direct staff to, to look at the history of, of African Americans in our community, specifically creating a contextual report of, of the history of African Americans in Frankfurt through the eyes of Green Hill Cemetery, the church and the community that surrounds it, and maybe other sites that might be discovered as part of that process. And this would all be creating a baseline of information for future National Register nominations, maybe future local historic district protections, all of that kind of thing. But we've kind of got to discover that history first before we can take those steps to, to list officially. You know, I, I, my nonprofit did a workshop at Green Hill not too long ago. And we're very lucky in our community to have Freddie Johnson and Buffalo Trace as partners. I don't know if everyone knows, but Buffalo Trace has developed an initiative to create a line of soda pops that the proceeds, a portion of the proceeds of which are going to be fed back into our community and donated for the maintenance and upkeep of Green Hill Cemetery. So, really what I'm, I'm asking to develop here would be a baseline to create sort of a, a appropriate preservation plan for the cemetery and maybe the surrounding area as well. It'll give us that baseline information to be able to do that. As well as a request to ask staff to apply for CLG grant to begin what I'm calling a historic preservation plan for the City of Frankfurt. And this really would go beyond even this African American focused initiative that would, might be a separate grant and a separate initiative to look at the future of preservation in our community, what places we need to protect, identifying historic resources that exist that we might be unaware of, beginning the process of National Register nominations for sites that are not listed currently that might be eligible like Cove Springs and, and some other things, really the identification, evaluation, and protection of, of our resources so that members of our architects review board, our museum board and otherwise can really have the tools necessary and the understanding in that, again, that baseline information to go forward with, with preservation initiatives. So, I'd like to, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we can discuss, I suppose, if, if there's a second. But I'd like to direct staff to apply for certified local government in the amount of twenty thousand dollars or an appropriate amount to create a Frankfurt Historic Preservation Plan as well as to direct staff to apply for a certified local government grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars or the appropriate amount to create a historic context for African American history in the City of Frankfurt with specific focus on Green Hill and the cemetery and the surrounding community. We can apply, sorry, that's the motion, but I understand we can apply for, for multiple grants simultaneously. We have been recipient of, I think, two grants every year for the past several years, and I think those amounts are right in keeping with those projects and maybe the future commission might add a little money if it's needed to develop those initiatives and really will give a, a solid footing for a new preservation officer to begin their work and, and really protect the historic places that make our community so unique.
Okay, so your motion is to apply for two grants, one in the amount of two, twenty thousand dollars or the appropriate amount for historic preservation plan. The second part of that is to direct staff to apply for a ten thousand dollar grant or appropriate amount to, would you just take the second part, please?
Yeah, yeah, the second part is a bit specific, but to create a historic contextual report of African American history in Frankfurt with specific focus on Green Hill, the cemetery, and other historic sites important to African American history.
Okay. Let the city clerk catch up on that.
Shremae, I can email you that specifically if you'd like me to. As soon as our meeting finishes, I will.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and that does require a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer.
Question, Mayor.
Sorry, Commissioner.
We're in discuss, we're in discussion, right?
So, we are.
Um, so I'm sure there has to be copious amounts of research already in existence, and I'm pretty sure that Mr. Russ Hatter would be the vast reservoir of much of that information. So how would you, Commissioner, include, I, I guess what I'm asking, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, is that you are asking for additional research to occur on top of what we already know. Is that what you're saying?
Yes and no. There is maybe a lot known that's in pieces in multiple places. This would be kind of collecting that community knowledge. We, we have a number of oral history interviews, right, that sort of have some of that information. We might collect more. As far as I know, though, a lot of the Green Hill area is kind of undiscovered yet, so it would be going out and specifically looking for information. Of course, post-Civil War African American history is hard to find very often and, and prior to the war, it's, it's nearly impossible at times. So what's out there is sort of unknown and it'll be the consultant's job if we get to the grant fund and then select a consultant to kind of weed through what is known and what isn't. And, you know, develop a, a more full narrative in one place that would be one document for future research, future work by the, by the City of Frankfurt, specifically in mind for the African American Heritage Grant, if you will, is sort of planning the future maintenance of Green Hill Cemetery and how we, you know, how we work with that board to ensure that that's preserved in an appropriate manner for the future. Does that answer your question? Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I, I do know that there, there are some books and other historical, historical documents that some of our local folks have, have written. I know Ms. Sheila Burden, Sheila Mason had written a very nice book as well. All right, if there's no other questions, clerk please call.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes.
Mr. Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, that item is adopted. Anything else under, oh, city manager, Russell?
Just a quick question concerning that, Commissioner Wisman, you were talking about, is this appropriate for me to ask, Mayor? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, talking about Green Hill Cemetery and the surrounding community, are there parameters set on the community just for staff to follow, or are we just going to let the, the leads take us where they do as far as this goes?
Yeah, I think the, the latter, Mr. Russell, you know, sort of what I have in mind is, is trying to figure out what the history of that area specifically, but the tentacles might go a number of places. So I don't want to define it too, too, you know, narrowly that, that we restrict something that might develop even more. Of course, you know, ideally if we still had the crawl and some of the other historically African American parts of town, those should be included as that, but, but to my knowledge, most of the, that history has been torn down throughout the city. So, I, I sort of feel that Green Hill and the, the church that's there and the few houses just around it are, are a resource that's been yet undiscovered. So that was kind of where I was wanting the focus to look at. But, but who knows what else might be out there appropriate to that, that context, so.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I can, I just want to thank all the commission for indulging my, obviously preservation and history are really my passion among many, you know, real passions for this community, but thank you for indulging me and, and setting. I think this is going to be quite a legacy for this commission to have, to have created this framework that is going to protect our, our historic resources in the future. Or, you know, when, when you get down to it, I think places really exist in two things. It's the, the built environment, which is usually embodied in the historic buildings and the history of the community and the people of a town that define us from every other place in the world. And I think we, you know, it is important upon us to, to preserve those places that, that make us unique and give us this sense of place and our identity in many ways. So thank you all.
You're welcome. Commissioner Waldrich, you have your hand up.
Yes, um, it doesn't really pertain to that, but in technically really not on the agenda, but I wanted to just take time right now to, since we are talking history, is to take a moment of silence for Dr. Mary Smith Stowe, who is a huge staple in this community as the first African American president at Kentucky State. She was actually the eleventh president at Kentucky State University in nineteen ninety-one. She was my president when she came into the, when I came into the university in ninety-seven. She has been the most outstanding woman president at Kentucky State, has so many ties. She has written a book. She is also a, a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. She was the sorority sister that brought me into Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and I'm, I'm proud to call her sorority sister. I am honored to be able to have called her president. Um, she's always been a mentor to me and she has been one of the trailblazers that I have always looked up to, and she is one of the reasons why I am in a position today of leadership on this commission because she trailed, she was a trailblazer for African American women and African Americans in Frankfurt and beyond. She received her honorary doctoral from Kentucky State University as well. She received her degrees from University of Kentucky. And so I just, my prayers go out to her family, you know, Dr. Smith, Daryl Smith here, who is a dentist here in town, her son, her, one of her daughters had already passed on, but she has other daughters by marriage and other children there, and so just want prayers to go out to that family during this time. She's laid to rest right now. She is on Kentucky State's campus until five o'clock for visitation. Tomorrow, there will be a private funeral for her. That will be very small numbers to the family, but please, you know, check out the newspaper in Lula Flowers, maybe scholarships at Kentucky State University, I believe, are being set up. But just want to take a moment of silence to honor such an amazing woman that's done so much for Kentucky State University, the relationship for the city, and just so many in this community. So if you don't mind to indulge.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I believe you said you were the first African American president, you know, I think you might have said the first woman.
Female, female African American president. Yes, if I did not say that, yes, that's what I, yeah.
Uh, and Mayor, uh, just to tack on to that, you know, the, the Smith family was really active in the community. Dr. Leroy Smith, I had the pleasure of, he was one of my professors at KSU as well. I didn't get to have Ms. Smith as a, as a teacher, but I, I know she was erudite and quite a scholar. So Commissioner Waldrich is quite correct. The, the honor is well deserved and we appreciate the Smith family's contribution to our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you for those words, Scott.
All right, um, next item then would be executive session.
I'll read it, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Wisman.
I move that we go into executive session per KRS sixty-one dot eight-ten subsection one, subsection B, deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to economic development, property adjacent to Fort Hill and a fire station where publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
All right, the motion. Give a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer, any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like aye? All right, we are in closed session. Just give us a second for our staff to back in open session, give us a couple of seconds to. I can open session, give us a couple of seconds to catch up. Bobby?
You guys are good to go.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion, Mayor. Mayor, I move to make a motion to acquire 5.87 acres of Merle Street, known as the Dimmerson Property, for the amount of $15,000 and to pay the appraisal of $250 to Marshall Flynn Real Estate Appraisals and to acquire the former Pick Pack Building located at 221 West Second Street for the amount of $390,000 and to pay $600 to Marshall Flynn.
I'm sorry.
Appraisal.
Can we do those all three as individuals, please?
I don't know, he's making a motion. Let me, let him finish his motion.
I'd asked that before. I can rescind my motion and make a new motion there.
Okay, well, I haven't recognized your motion.
Rescind my motion and make a new motion.
Okay, about that, I actually had, okay, that's fine.
All right, Mayor, I'll make a motion to acquire, sorry, one question. You said three, Commissioner Waldridge, I don't, to pay the appraisal fee separately?
No, that can go together. I was just meaning to, I thought they were running together. I just wanted them to be two, the difference entity, sorry. But no, the appraisal doesn't have to be the third. It can just tap on, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, I'll move to make a motion to acquire the property located on Merle Street of 5.87 acres, known as the Dimmerson Property, for the amount of $15,000 per the appraisal and to pay $250 to Marshall Flynn Real Estate Appraisals for said appraisal.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Wisman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? Being none, court please call.
Commissioner Waldridge?
I'm gonna vote no, and I'll explain my answer. I'm saying no as to, right now, this to me does not look like really needed even be a special meeting item. And I didn't receive paperwork for some of the breakdown of the numbers until probably one issue, what have you. And I think in such a spending money, we should have received this. If it was going to be a special item, the information should have came from the interim city manager and the mayor in ample time for us to look over the numbers and not within a couple of hours of the meeting when spending taxpayers' money during this time. I don't think it's a huge necessity. It's not an emergency to have a special meeting today about purchasing, and I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes, and I'll explain my answer as well. This property is adjacent directly to our existing park and has been traced upon by hikers and others for some time. It's directly behind the Sullivan House on Fort Hill and it offers the opportunity to expand our park space in an area that is essentially unusable as it is for any other purpose. That said, there's also a huge difference between a special called meeting, which we can do at any time and an emergency meeting. One commissioner tends to run those together. Thank you.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, and I'd like to explain my vote to, this property of 5.87 acres serves as a buffer to existing city park and it helps protect our park from outside development, even though that may be remote. We always, this city has always, in my history with it, has sought to protect property or city parks and acquire adjoining property where appropriate. So I vote yes.
Mayor May?
I vote yes too, and also remind commissioners that any time they are in a meeting call on agenda, they're certainly welcome and encouraged to call staff if they're not sure about any item. And I think that's on the commissioners or the mayor to get that information if they want to ask that, so. Next item, another motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll move to acquire the former Pick Pack Building located at 221 West Second Street, Frankfurt, Kentucky, for the amount of $390,000 and to direct staff to enter into a contract for purchase of that that site and to pay $600 to Marshall Flynn Real Estate Appraisals for the appraisal of said property.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner, second by Commissioner Tippett. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, Mayor, if I can just state, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about this property for some time. I thought the city should have acquired it before Pick Pack closed to help ensure what I see as a critical function in our community is a grocery store. The site does provide an opportunity for potential to construct a new firehouse facility there, although personally I don't believe that's the best use of that property. I think we've had some discussions, our city manager's brought to us the potential to acquire this property either for economic development or future city development purposes, but for the immediate future, there is a drastic need for housing shelter accommodations in our community and even going to be ideally probably growing outside of the economic impact caused by the pandemic that this building will immediately provide us the opportunity to outfit to a small degree to provide the shelter accommodations if they're needed. But also just generally for future economic development with the investment of $12 million along Second Street, this property provides us a lot of opportunity for critical economic development in the future and/or development of critical life-saving features like a fire station, which we desperately need to construct a new facility for.
Okay, please, Commissioner Tippett.
Yes, we just, I'd like to stipulate that, you know, we are purchasing this property and we are allowing future commission, the future, the next commission and future commissions to decide what the final disposition of that property will be. And we'll make the best use of it currently as we can, which could be a shelter that is desperately needed in the COVID pandemic. So we're allowing the next commission full attitude as to exercise this discretion as to what should go in there.
And if I may, Mayor, following up on Mr. Tippett's comment, we have no intent, there is no immediacy to demolish that structure or anything like that. I just want to make sure the public knows we're acquiring this property for future opportunity and have no intent at the time to destroy anything that future discussions will be up to the next commission to decide the fate and future of that site and that structure.
That's correct. I just want to further point out that three to four years, I guess it was three years ago, discussion about purchasing property for a new fire station for Station 1, which is the station on Second Street. And that station covers all of South Frankfurt and covers the Capitol Campus. And if we do not keep a fire station in that area, then that whole side of the river will be unprotected by fire and EMS services. The nearest station would be on the other side of the river or up by the airport, which would greatly reduce response time to anything in South Frankfurt or any emergency event at the Capitol Campus, which includes the governor's mansion. So we have a responsibility to that neighborhood, the whole downtown area and to the state government facility to make sure that we have adequate fire and EMS coverage for the shortest response time as well. So this is, again, something that we have done. Try to look long range planning. We've done long range planning. This is one of those issues that is planning for the future. And whether that turns out to be the best site for Fire Station 1 or if we can find another location in that area for Fire Station 1, that'll be determined in the next three to four years on the, probably at the quickest. So it may even be beyond that either. This is an opportunity that opened up with this property becoming available for sale. So with that opportunity, we have to take action. So this in no way is a final decision on how that property will be used. It's just having it as a possibility for expansion of city government in that corridor, particularly for firing. If there's no other questions or comments, we will have the court please call.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, and I'd like to explain my vote. Please understand that we are securing this property for potential further development or sale if the next commission so chooses. It's plain and simple. We're acquiring this property for our own securities for the city and we will sell it or develop it as the next commission so chooses. Thank you.
Mayor May?
Yeah. That motion passes. Our next item would be adjourned.
It's adjourned, Mayor.
Second.
Being none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 There we go, hired at least three. All those opposed, like aye. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.